Our first order of business is the consideration of adoption of a policy concerning public attendance and remote participation by council members in city council meetings and adoption of rules and procedure for electronic meetings during state of emergency. Call our city attorney Louie Vina to give some guidance, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this on? Yeah. Obviously, we're in an unprecedented time and to assure that we have proper procedure for holding meetings during this state of emergency, we've drafted this resolution, which would, the main purpose of which is to adopt a set of rules, procedures for holding what we call electronic meetings, but really which includes any meeting during this state of emergency that in which we limit the number of people and provide for social distancing here in the council chambers. This would also apply if we had to have a meeting by video where one or more of the members of the council was present remotely and attending that way. Of course, tonight, everybody is, every council member is here, but it applies because we're not allowing the members of the public and press that would normally be in here. The rules which have been provided, y'all set out simply procedures for how people's presence is accounted for, calculating a quorum, how we vote, and above all, that we obey the limit on the number of people in the room under the governor's executive order, which is presently 10. And the rules provide that if that should be relaxed, then we will automatically relax our number, maximum number. In any event, these rules would only apply during the time of the current state of emergency and would expire automatically at the end of that state of emergency. I should also add that the bill that the legislature passed Saturday, was signed by the governor today, expressly provides guidelines for local governments to use for electronic meetings, and these rules that we have follow those provisions.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to adopt resolution adopting a policy on public attendance and remote attendance by council members at city council meetings and adopting rules of procedure for electronic meetings of city council during the COVID-19 state of emergency.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
A second. Any discussion concerning this resolution? Hearing no discussion, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Next on our agenda is normally public comments. Kelly, no one has signed up to make public comments, and we'll move on to our next agenda, which is pledge of allegiance. I'll ask Chris Jernigan if he will lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next, we'll have our invocation given by the Reverend Dana McKinnon, the First United Methodist Church. It's been pre-recorded.
Hello, City of Morganton. What a privilege to be with you tonight as our council meets. And we're doing this, of course, very differently. Everything is very different. And you know, this is hard. It is tough. For each and every one of us, doing our lives, doing our jobs, doing our families, it's been difficult. And I certainly understand that, just like you have had to experience that yourselves. We appreciate the diligence of our city council in relation to finding ways to continue to help our community and government function. And as we begin today, we certainly want to hold them in prayer, and also everyone in our Morganton community who has been impacted in such a wide variety of ways by this pandemic event. So I invite you to prayer as we pray together. Gracious God, we are so thankful. We are so grateful for the lives and privilege that we have. We are thankful for the community in which we live. We are thankful for the weather that we share together. We are thankful for so many people in this community who have given themselves to the service of those in need, especially the least, the last, and the lost among us. We pray a hedge of protection around those who serve and protect us over our public safety, over our emergency services, over those in our hospital systems, over those who even put themselves at risk just by opening a grocery store. So we are so thankful, oh God, for these servants of yours. We pray that you would surround our city council with your wisdom and with your presence. We also pray in earnest for all of the people who have been impacted in Burke County by this horrible virus, and for the families who have had that additional impact. And we pray your healing grace and healing hand over those folks. And we pray for all of our families and individuals across our area who have been impacted economically because of the closure of businesses and the inability to offer services. We're eager to get back, God, but we've got to do it safe. Open our hearts and minds to your wisdom. Help us to follow your way. I pray this in the name of him who was and is and has yet to come.
Thank you, Reverend McKinnon, for doing that pre-recorded for us. Next is the introduction of council. To my far right, Chris Jernigan. I'm Ronnie Thompson, the mayor. To my left, Sally Sandy, city manager, Butch McSwain, city council. Joy Hearn Guzman, who's our interpreter for the deaf. Kelly Russell, who is our recording secretary. Chris Hawkins, the city council. Wendy Cato, mayor protem. And Louie Vina, our city attorney. So that's our introduction of council tonight. Our first item of business is a retirement resolution. I'd like to read that resolution honoring Gary F. Massey. Whereas Gary F. Massey was employed by the City of Morganton as public safety officer trainee in the Public Safety Department on December 14, 1992, promoted to public safety officer one on July 3, 1993, promoted to PSO two on June 17, 1996, promoted to senior PSO on June 12, 1999, promoted to sergeant on December 4, 2000, changed to sergeant special operations on June 21, 2007, changed to sergeant, sergeant of seaplaning on December 29, 2008, promoted to lieutenant on June 24, 2017, and promoted to lieutenant three on July 6, 2019. And whereas Gary F. Massey has faithfully served the City of Morganton in the Public Works Department and has given his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for 30 years and one month. And whereas Gary F. Massey retired from the City of Morganton as lieutenant three in the Public Safety Department on May 1, 2020. And whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Gary F. Massey and express their appreciation for a job well done, now therefore be it resolved by the City of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to Gary Massey adopted this fourth day of May 2020, Ronnie Thompson, mayor, Sally Sandy, city clerk. Do I have a motion to accept this resolution?
So moved.
I have a motion to accept the resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion about that resolution?
Can I ask the question? It says, "Served the City of Morganton in the Public Works Department."
It is supposed to be public safety. Yes. We'll get that changed. Thank you, Wendy. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Need another motion, please.
I'll move that we declare the weapon Glock 22 Gen IV semi-auto serial number XHY533 and Karen's Fire Service Helmet Model Number 1044DSR as surplus, sold for $1 and presented to retired Lieutenant Massey.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And I have the dollar to buy this for Gary, even though he can't come until a later date.
Okay. Thank you, Sally. Next on our agenda is consideration of a resolution honoring a retiring, a retiring city employee, Norman Keith Scott. Whereas Norman Keith Scott was employed by the City of Morganton as a mechanic in the garage of Public Works Department on July 14, 2011. And whereas Norman Keith Scott has faithfully served the City of Morganton in the Public Works Department and has given of his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for 10 years and one month. And whereas Norman Keith Scott retired from the City of Morganton as a mechanic in the Public Works Department on May 1, 2020. And whereas the Morganton City Council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Norman Keith Scott and express their appreciation for a job well done, now therefore be it resolved by the City of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to Norman Keith Scott adopted this fourth day of May 2020, Ronnie Thompson, mayor, Sally Sandy, city clerk. Do I have a motion to accept this resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is a presentation of service awards. We normally give service awards to longtime employees for years of service at city council. It's impossible to recognize all employees, but we try to do when they're 20, 25, or 30 years. And tonight, we have service pins for James Hildebrand, who works at Kama as a maintenance worker for 20 years. Donnie Dellinger, Public Safety PSO Special Assignment for 20 years. Teresa Powell, Finance and Customer Service Specialist for 20 years. Shane Roper in our Water Resources, Compost Operator for 20 years. And Mike Crofts, Development Design Chief Building Inspector for 25 years. It's amazing we keep those employees for so long. They stay with us and they do a great job.
We do. And we have invited the retirees and the service recipients to come at a later date when we can actually recognize them.
Next on our agenda is public advocacy, and we have an announcement about the Main Street Champion, Angela Shores at Adventure Bound Books. Sally, would you cover that, please?
Absolutely. So at the recently held State North Carolina Main Street Meeting, Angela was awarded the Main Street Champion Award for the City of Morganton. And what we can tell you is she opened the store in 2018, and at that point, her goal was to become the premier independent bookstore serving Burke County and surrounding counties. And since that time, she's been involved in all things downtown. She's gotten involved in the Downtown Development Association. She's joined the Steering Committee for the Courthouse Square Redevelopment Project. She's participated in the Burke Arts Council's third Thursday Night Art Cross, and many other things. She's done a lot of promotional programming at her store and really brought notoriety to downtown. And that's how she became a Morganton Main Street Champion. Some of the things that she has done, weekly storytimes, adult book clubs, author meet, author meet and greets, poetry nights, writing contests, and all of those things that really have brought notoriety not only to her store, but to downtown. And we would like to honor her as the Main Street Champion.
Great news. Thank you. Some upcoming events downtown. Our farmer's market open for the season on Saturdays from 8:00 a.m. to noon, beginning May 2 at 300 Beach Street. Wednesdays from 12:00 noon to 4:00 p.m. on the mini-market, beginning on May 6 at 111 North Green Street. And the announcement that the TGIF 2020 series season has been canceled. Sally, would you like to cover any of that? We just...
The farmer's markets, we really encourage folks to participate and get really nice homegrown, healthy food. We do ask while you're doing it that you observe social distancing rules. Farmer's markets are actually allowed under the current restrictions and actually really encouraged for them to happen. So we're excited. It seems at least semi-normal that we have something starting up that we look forward to each year. Sad that TGIF has been canceled, but it's pretty obvious, and you know, you can't just do that on a dime, that gatherings in the magnitude and the crowd that that draws, that we will not be able to hold those this year. Stay tuned, because they will be back, and something will be returning. To that end, I also wanted to say to those of you viewing at home and viewing on YouTube and everyone listening, City Hall does remain closed in most of our facilities, the rec facilities, the gymnasiums and the rec centers, the aquatic center remain closed to the public. We are, however, transacting business, and I know we've done a lot of things to remind you of that, either by telephone, through our drive-up window, through the mail, through other ways. We are happy to try to help anyone. I know, I thank everyone for their patience. I know that we have had days in our drive-through that are extremely busy, when we have due dates for utilities, extremely busy. We have enlisted extra folks, and we are actually meeting cars out in the parking lot, taking payments, trying to get people to be handled so they don't have to be in that long line for so long. That will continue for a while longer. Ask everyone's patience. I know our playgrounds are taped up, and our things that people like to do, you can't do right now. Our parks do remain open for you to get outside and enjoy this weather. We encourage that. Again, there, we ask you to please social distance and to be responsible with those around you.
Sally, one thing that's happening, some construction on Burtmont and West Union. I know in the last two weeks, several people have been concerned, what's, what's the city doing? Is it city project? Could you please help clarify that, please?
I can. It is not a city project. It is actually a private contractor that received utility easements from DOT and the city, and they are laying communication line for a customer. So they are working for a private company.
Okay. Thank you.
And it goes all the way through the center of town.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the North Carolina Municipal Power Agency Number One. I believe we have a resolution or some information?
We do. A couple of things. So that group continues to work. Tis budget season. Tis a very difficult budget season. But we are getting information from the power agency that we can use in preparing our budget that ultimately we'll be presenting and have ready for the public in June. The other thing, the power agency has asked that we consider giving them consent to allow us, it seems funny, to allow us to receive our monthly power bill from them electronically. And I know in the day and age when we're all having meetings and we're zooming from everywhere, to have to do something like this seems odd. But back when those agreements were done in the 80s, it basically requires that they U.S. mail us a copy. And they would like to change that. We are comfortable with that changing, but what has to happen is tonight, you have to consider an ordinance that was prepared by Electricity's that would allow us to do this and then agree to adopt the waiver agreement, which they have also provided to us, which basically is about 15 pages of words that their attorneys wrote that says, "We will receive our bill electronically."
Okay, so...
Staff would certainly urge you to adopt this.
So we have, well, let's have a motion first. Do I have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve a waiver agreement with North Carolina Municipal Power Agency Number One.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Sally, does this, is just the waiver agreement we're doing now? Or are we doing...
Well, the ordinance sets up for the waiver agreement to be approved. So you're really approving both of those items.
Okay. Any questions from council? If not, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is a consent agenda, and we have six issues, I believe, on that consent agenda. Sally, would you handle that, please?
Absolutely. We do have six items, and we would ask that you consider approving those in a single motion, but we could discuss anything separately if you so choose. Those items include minutes from the March 2 council meeting, a regular session, and a closed session held on that evening. An ordinance that sets up our temporary closures of state highways for city-sponsored special events. We do this every year for TGIF, for the Historic Morganton Festival, the Oyster Outing for other events that will happen. This was obviously prepared before we came into the situation we're in now. We have received our closure permits from DOT. We want to go ahead and adopt this ordinance so that we're ready should we get to a point that any future events could be held. And so we're just asking that you approve it, understanding that events that don't meet the requirements and restrictions we're under will not be held. Also, approval of revisions, which is an annual item to our water and sewer line standards and specifications. A resolution authorizing the emergency administrative leave that you gave to full-time employees for the month of April for the stay-at-home orders. A consideration of declaring a list of firearms, and those are included in your packet with serial numbers to declare a surplus for a credit at Smokefoot Trade &amp; Pawn in the amount of $6,725. The award of contract for improvements at the Phase III of the soccer complex, a project that is well underway. You'll recall when we awarded bids, we left out the playground equipment and the shelter, hoping to do that later so that we could save contractor overhead and those kinds of things for that part of the project. We have received bids. We received them through a purchasing contract with Sourcewell, which is an allowable purchase for us to make. And we received bids in the amount of $90,855.60. That is under the budget that we had prepared to spend on those items. And that concludes our list.
Do any members of council wish to have any items removed from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Underneath business, the first thing is consideration of amendments to the city water and sewer ordinance to allow master metering. Sally, are you taking that one, or Louie?
I'm taking that one.
Okay.
So this is an item that we discussed back in February at our workshop, and the idea of dwelling units that have multiple units and not having to install logistically, expense-wise, and physical location-wise, an individual meter at all of those units. A common practice is to use a master meter in water and sewer. Our ordinance requires that every dwelling unit have its own meter and be billed, the way it is written. That's pretty standard, too. So we are asking to amend that now to say that an account for the ability to use a master meter would still account for the fact that each customer would be billed individually, which meets the requirement of the ordinance and comes to help pay for the fixed costs that are in the system. We would ask that this go into effect July 1, 2020, which would be our new budget year. Any fees changes associated with this when you set water rates and sewer rates for the upcoming year would happen at the time we adopted the budget. Would also reiterate that we do have some customers... Would also reiterate that we do have some customers that are in a grandfathered existing situation. As we talked about at the workshop, there would be no implication to them until July 1, 2021, and then we would look at phasing them in over a three-year period. So this is just getting the language set up. We've got a couple of multifamily projects that are underway, and we'd really like to get them in under the new ordinance so we don't have to go back and change anything.
Okay. What's the wish of council?
Motion to approve amendments to city water and sewer ordinance to allow master metering.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Butch, you look like you've got a question.
No, no, we covered it pretty well in February, I think.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is consideration of appointments, actually, to the Fireman's Supplement Retirement Fund and Fireman's Relief Fund boards. Sally?
Yes, so the city's finance director has a position on these boards to help, to advise the boards in financial decisions. When Karen Duncan retired back in December, that left a vacancy. Jesse Parris has now joined us, and so we would ask that you appoint Jesse to the Fireman's Supplemental Retirement Fund, which is your appointment. Public Safety has asked that she be appointed to the relief fund, and you would just be confirming their request.
What's the wish of council?
I'll make a motion to appoint and affirm Jesse Parris as a member of the Fireman's Supplemental Retirement Fund and the Fireman's Relief Fund boards for terms to expire in May, 2022.
Have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, next on our agenda is the 30-day notice for vacancies on boards and commissions. We do have some terms that are going to expire, and vacancies will exist, exist, and the city council makes or confirms appointments. Those nominations and appointments will be made at the June city council meeting. On the Board of Adjustment, we have one term expiring, which is a council appointment. The Cable Commission, we have three terms expiring and two vacancies, a council appointment. On the Community Appearance, we have three terms expiring, and that's a mayor's appointment. Human Relations Commission, two expiring terms and a resignation, which is a mayor's appointment. Main Street Advisory, there are five terms expiring, that's a mayor's appointment. Planning and Zoning, three terms expiring, council appointments. And the Recreation Advisory, there are three terms expiring and three vacancies, those are council appointments. So anyone interested in volunteering for these vacancies, fill out an application of requests for appointments to Morganton's Boards and Commission. They're available through the clerk and especially on the website. Okay, any further business to come before city council tonight? I have a statement that I'd like to read. "We'd like to thank everyone who joined us virtually tonight while we navigated a different way to hold a public meeting. I'd like to thank council for being here and practicing social distancing through tonight's meeting so that we can continue to carry out necessary city business as we negotiate the COVID-19 crisis. We know this isn't easy, but we're all getting through this together. We are aware of the burden placed on businesses and individuals by closures and safety precautions mandated by Governor Roy Cooper to prevent the spread of COVID-19. We know this is incredibly frustrating and inconvenient, but we also know it is necessary. The fabric of our lives have changed, but we are not powerless. There is a great deal we can do to protect ourselves and each other. We must all follow Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Guidelines and obey executive orders issued by Governor Cooper to help stop the spread of COVID-19. The more we adhere to this guidance, the more likely it is we can return to normal sooner rather than later. We'd like to remind everyone at home to complete the 2020 U.S. Census. Completing the census is essential, as it ensures we will get the resources and representation we need from the federal government over the course of the next 10 years. The U.S. Census counts everyone living in the United States, and answers to the questions are kept confidential. The deadline to complete the census was April 1, but the deadline has been extended. The U.S. Census Bureau has not announced when the new deadline is, so it is important to complete the census as soon as possible. Currently, only 53.4% of people in Morganton have completed the census. It is quick and easy, and you can complete it online at 2020census.gov. Again, thank you to everyone who joined us tonight, and we hope you are, all are staying healthy. Any further business? We are adjourned."